Good evening and welcome to the regular school board for our independent school district eight thirty-three. It is Thursday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen at six thirty P. M. And we are in Cottage Grove at our district service center. One point oh is rule call.
Pat Driscoll. Heather Hirsch. Michelle Woody is absent. Katie Schwartz. Sharon Van Leer is absent. Ron Cath. Tracy Burnett. Hannah Poor. Lindsay Strom. Maya Mayer.
Two point oh, please rise and join me for pledge allegiance. Two administrative recommendation for non-renewal coaching contract number two and the reasons for non-renewal. And seven point three resolution, non-renewing coaching contract number two. So with those amendments, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Ron and second by Katie. All right, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Four point oh are our district highlights and four point one is our district eight thirty-three snack program. And Andy Cafflish will join us from Armstrong Elementary.
Good evening Chair Burnett, members of the school board. Dr. Jacobus, my name is Andy Cafflish and I have the pleasure of serving as the principal at Armstrong Elementary. I'm here tonight to introduce you to a couple of students who have had a really positive impact on my students at Armstrong. This program is not only benefiting students at Armstrong, but students at eighteen sites across our district. Soon you will hear from Woodbury Girl Scouts Erica Miller, who's a ninth grader at Woodbury High School. And Lila Youngdahl, who's a ninth grader at Eastridge High School, along with their troop leader Ann Miller, as they tell you more about the snack program. Before we hear from Erica and Lila, I would like to introduce you to Renee Thies, who's the academic success coach at Armstrong. And she works directly with students in my building who benefit from the snack program. Renee.
This year, we started receiving healthy snacks through the snack program that these Girl Scouts created. And I just would like to say a few words about the positive impact it has had on the students at Armstrong. Prior to this year, it's always been a challenge trying to make sure that the students who needed healthy snacks would receive them. Teachers and students would often reach out to me to help with this. And thanks to the district eight thirty-three snack program, this is no longer a challenge for us. Our students know that if they need a healthy snack, all they need to do is come down to my room and get one. And they are so grateful and truly inspired by the hard work that these Girl Scouts did to create such an amazing program. And one of the students wrote this, "Your thoughtfulness is a gift I will always treasure. Sometimes the simplest things mean the most." So thank you, girls. I'll have the girls come up and talk a little bit more about the program.
So we started a pilot program at three elementary schools last year. And it did very well. We were very surprised at how great it did. So this year, we opened it to any of the schools, any elementary, middle school, or high school in the district that wanted to participate. So some of the schools have collected and given out snacks. And other schools have just received snacks because they don't have the means or just to get donations. So what we do is in each of these offices, we have little boxes that the students can bring in snacks that their parents give them to donate. And these are like healthy, non-perishable snacks. And then they go through the inter-district mail or come through other means to get to schools who need it. Or they just receive it. They give it to kids in their own school that need it through the social workers who know who needs these items. So we also... Sorry, I'm nervous.
This winter, we went to a winter packing event. And there, we were connected with a member of the Cottage Grove Lions Club. And he invited us to come speak at one of the Lions Clubs meetings. And we went, we spoke, and we introduced our program, and they were really interested. They gave us a really generous donation, which helped us buy more snacks for our program. And from that meeting, there was also a member that worked with Thrivant. And Thrivant gave us $250 donation. And we went and went with him and his wife to Sam's Club, and we bought over a thousand snacks. And that really helped. And then from there, they suggested that we reach out to the other Lions Clubs. So we reached out to Woodbury and Saint Paul Park. And we met with Woodbury, and we got a great donation. And Saint Paul Park just gave us a donation after hearing about it. So that really helped out, too.
So at one of the Lions Clubs, someone suggested we reach out to Hy-Vee because they knew that they do some really good stuff for our community. So we did reach out to them, and they suggested that we do this thing where we take bags and we put ten different snacks. So to help the kids for two weeks of school days. And they are selling them. There still are some that you can purchase for like five bucks. And these go straight to kids who need them, and they're healthy snacks. And that was a great help because this is like thousands of snacks that they're helping us out with. Thanks for listening.
That's incredible. Thank you for the impact you're making in our schools. It's awesome. Four point two, winter activities update. And we will have Phil Kimmel from Park High School, first of all. I presume you're going to introduce the others?
Yep, absolutely, to start. Good evening, school board members, including our student reps and Dr. Jacobus. Once again, we really appreciate the time just to share some of the many great accomplishments and achievements we've had at all three high schools throughout the course of this winter. It's been a great winter. To start with, I'm going to call up four, I would call them very special students from all three of our schools. So if our triple-A award winners could come up, we are going to let them introduce themselves and share a little bit with why they achieved the award. But I'll tell you a little bit about it. The Minnesota State High School considers the triple-A probably their most prestigious award. It's an award that's given for excellence in academics, athletics, and arts. And honestly, I'll just speak for Park High School especially, we wish we had more students like the students that are standing behind me right now. A lot of times, we get kids that obviously excel in academics, and they're very involved. And they're involved in a lot of Minnesota State High School League athletics. And then we get a lot of kids who are also very, very strong in academics. And again, are very strong in a lot of our activities. High School League activities include speech, debate, one act play, and then you can compete in music competitions as well, too. But in our larger schools, it's becoming more and more rare to find students that are involved in all three in a high school league sport, fine art, and excelling in activities. So like I said, the high school considers this one of their most prestigious awards. We want to give these kids a chance to recognize them in front of the board here. So I will just introduce our two park winners. And then they're just going to come up and again, kind of share with you some of the things that they're involved in. They're involved in a lot. Some of the things that they're involved in which got them this award. And then, you know, one of the things is I'm happy they're both be able to get here. You can see when Hannah comes up, she came straight off the softball field. So I told her, "It's okay. You don't have to change." She literally came straight off the softball field. But I know from the Woodbury and Eastridge standpoint, too, these kids are so involved that they're in so many different activities that I know some of them couldn't be here tonight. But I will introduce Park's male and female winner, Hannah Schlitter and Alex Toll, and they will come up and introduce themselves a little bit here.
Hi, I'm Hannah Schlitter. I go to Park High School. At Park, I'm involved in choir, NHS, cross-country, basketball, and softball. And in the past, I have also participated in swimming and track. And next year, I plan to study biology at the University of Saint Thomas.
My name's Alex Toll. I'm from Park High School. I played various sports at Park High School. I played football mainly. And then during my summers, I would spend playing league baseball. I'm involved in many different choirs at school as well. And then next year, I plan on attending NDSU, and my major still yet to be decided.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Plodak, Athletic Activities Director at Eastridge High School. And our female winner, Callie Coons, couldn't be here tonight, but Michael Kenny is here. And I'm not sure if he will tell you or not, but he did score a perfect thirty-six on his ACT this year. So I want to make sure to share that with you. Michael.
Thanks. Good to be here. So at Eastridge, I've been involved in a lot of music programs. So I'm in the band mainly. I've played with the orchestra and with the choir. I sing in church choir on Sundays. And then as for sports, I've been on cross-country, Nordic skiing, and track throughout high school. Really love them. And I couldn't be here today without my teachers, my coaches, my parents. And as for college, I'm still undecided at this point. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marvin Wooton. I'm the Activities Director at Woodbury High School. Just want to introduce our triple-A winners of this year. Alex Bissoura is our male winner. He cannot be here. He's on a function with our golf team. So I do want to introduce Shwayta.
Hi, I'm Shwayta from Woodbury High School. Some things I do at Woodbury High School, I'm in National Honor Society. And I have been on the varsity team for our soccer team all four years. I'm a goalkeeper. I'm also in choir, concert choir, the highest level choir. And next year, I'm planning to go to play D-one soccer at the University of Denver.
Thank you very much. And again, congratulations to all six kids. And I'm glad Sarah mentioned that because the students are very humble, and they talked about their athletics and their arts. And they didn't talk much about their academics, but obviously, all six of those students are phenomenal students as well, too. So congratulations to all six of those, and thanks so much for them for being here tonight. Okay. We'll go on to a few of the accomplishments we had at Park High School this winter. Again, we appreciate the opportunity. It seems a little odd because we're already in the mix of things with spring. But thinking back to winter, we had a lot of good things happen. I always like to share this. We work really hard on our purpose at all three schools of, you know, why are we choosing to do what we're doing in all of our activities? So I always like to share this, that, you know, at Park High School, our mission is, the mission of the Activities Department is to create learning opportunities for students to develop character, become well-rounded citizens, and achieve excellence in their activities, school, and community. And we really try to use that to guide everything that we're doing in all of our activities. A few of the highlights that I'll share, Ms. Plodak will introduce our Thunderbolts team. Again, I'd say it every time I'm here. It seems like a broken record. Our Thunderbolts team has tremendous, tremendous success every single year. This year, the floor hockey team took second place in state, and Sarah will say a little more about that. Our one-act play, we're section runner-ups this year. Again, I won't read through every single name as much as I would love to because there's a lot to mention. But a couple, you know, a couple of highlights in terms of state meet participants. It's been a long time since we had any students at the state speech meet. And that was just two weeks ago, and we had three students there, which again, to have three was a huge accomplishment. So Connor Burrell, Marissa Schwab, and Jermaine Wade all participated in that, which has been a long time for that. The other one which was a really neat accomplishment was our boys' swimming team. Again, it's been a very long time before we had any of our swimmers or male divers make it to the state meet. And I will just get through those names. We had Nathan Lemay, Dylan Perrington, Devin Schwartz, Dylan Perrington in two events, Hogan Larson, and Nathan Lemay again. So again, swimmers, I had a great season as well, too. Another one I'd like to mention is we've got great accomplishments on the field and on the ice in those areas. When our kids are doing great things in the classroom as well as participating, again, I love highlighting those. So we had a number of students that received academic all-state honors this year from girls' hockey, Molly Jensen, Sarah Croker, Lexi Gerber, Mallory Hoffman, Hannah, Lindsey Strom, who is again, up in front of us here. And Anna Cuthur in girls' basketball as well, too. So great athletes, but great students as well, too. And finally, or another one is team award-wise, is the Coaches Association gives out awards to teams that have team GPAs of three point seven or five or higher. And our girls' hockey team got that award, and our girls' basketball team got the award for having a team GPA of three point five or above. So again, thanks to Lindsay and the great students we have in our basketball team. A lot of good things. Another award that the Minnesota State High School League sponsors is an Excel Award. Most of the awards they have are for seniors as they're graduating. The Excel Award is for juniors who thrive in excellence, community, and education and leadership within the schools, within the community. And just to mention those, Addison Steinkie and Jake Kimmel, who happens to be my son, won that award. So a very proud father for that. And the last thing I will share with you, I try to do this as well, too. Again, all the accomplishments with conference wins and championships and all those things are obviously tremendous. You know, we talk a lot about why we play and that there's so many reasons that we do the things we do beyond the scoreboard. There's a lot of highlights. I always try to emphasize one. Probably my favorite moment of the winter was a girls' basketball game between Park and Woodbury. And a lot of our teams do community service at all three high schools. So it's not just Park. It's not just girls' basketball, but a lot do community service. But what the Park and Woodbury teams decide to do this year is, I love seeing it, is when they work together with each other and say, "Hey, we want to raise some money." And they decide to raise some money. The Coaches Association sponsors the Coaches versus Cancer. So raise money for cancer research, those kinds of things. Our team does free throw-a-thons where they get donations. But the best part about it was the two teams coming together. And so they all had matching shirts. And so they had pink matching shirts that said, "United, We Fight." And the Park team raised money, and the Woodbury team raised money. And between the two schools, they raised $6,000, which was incredible. But the reason that makes this so special is what they've done lately is try to really target a cause close to home. And so instead of just giving, again, how important it is to give the money to cancer research. But we've got families in our communities who are suffering, obviously, with these things. And again, very near and dear to our heart at Park is one of our staff members, one of our coaches on our girls' basketball staff is currently battling breast cancer. And so the both schools put their money together, and a portion of the money that was raised went to her family to help her fight her cause, to help with the expenses that are going on with young kids at home and that kind of thing. And again, when we came up with the idea, and you know, the Woodbury coach said, "Oh, my gosh, we want to help out, too." Just how neat it would be that, you know, people want to talk about rivalries and, you know. And honestly, I don't know who won the game that night, and I don't know if it's important. But the winners were obviously these two schools and programs and coaches that came together for this great cause. So for me, that was definitely a great example of why we do what we do. It goes well beyond the games and the scoreboard and that kind of thing. So great winter at Park High School. Last thing I will mention is tomorrow night is opening night of our musical, Little Shop of Horrors. So cast, crew, directors have been working very, very hard for that. And I know they're very excited for the opening night. We've got two weekends of shows, plenty of good seats still available, of course, I think for most of the shows. So we'd love if people would come out. But once again, thanks so much for the time tonight. I didn't ask who I'm turning it over to. And I will turn it over to Sarah Plodak, our Activities Director at Eastridge.
Thank you, Phil. I'm honored tonight to share so many of our accomplishments over the winter season. And I wanted to start with our music department. We have such a phenomenal music department led by incredible teachers at Eastridge High School that some of the honors, I just continue to be awed at. For band, we had two, we had three students, Michael May for trombone, Erica Freberg for bassoon, and then McCall Walker for the French horn. They receive the highest honors in band that they can, the all-state honors with that. Also, our band has, over the last couple of weeks, they've been competing in the section competitions. And our band received three superior ratings for their large group contest. Along with then, we had some younger students, ninth and tenth grade students, that received some all-state band honors as well. Dylan Moreno for the clarinet and Benjamin Sayers for the alto saxophone. Including in that, we also had a senior band member, Faith Gottske, who received the first-ever Best Pep Student of the Year Award. That's a first-time honor that we've had at Eastridge High School. Along with our band, our choir has performed multiple events over the last couple of weeks. And we had seventeen superior ratings. That was the highest in the region. And they are led by Liz Gulick, who is extremely dedicated and an amazing teacher, along with our orchestra, who they also received three superior ratings for their competitions. As far as our sports over the past winter, we were extremely busy and we had lots of firsts. I would like to introduce to you at this time our head Thunderbolts coach, Jeff Figgel-Miller, who has been coaching our Thunderbolts multiple seasons. But he is the head coach for our floor hockey. So come on up, Jeff, and he can share a couple of words. They took second in the state tournament, which was awesome. And they did a wonderful article on the program and the continued expanding of that.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Figgel-Miller. I am a resource teacher, special teacher at Woodbury High School. After school, I'm coaching all three sports for the adaptive sports. And I did bring a poster of our hockey team, so I'd like to maybe share that if you guys want to pass that around. Very proud of that. We just got done with the baseball game. We played New Prague. We beat them fourteen to three. So I came from the game to over here. It was a really good season, really interesting with all the snow and the storms and the resuscitation we had to do. Adaptive floor hockey is an indoor sport. All of our sports are indoors. They're wearing the hockey helmets, hockey sticks, and we use a felt puck. And we get a lot of participation throughout the whole district. So we're dealing with all three high schools. We're dealing with all the middle schools at seventh through twelfth grade. So it involves a lot of students. We had eighteen students on hockey this year. They came from all the different places. And our top three things are really fun, family, and then everybody participating. So I can confidently say that every game we had, there was full participation during the season. And then as we got to state tournament, we had everybody playing just about every game at the tournament as well. So got through the first couple of rounds of state tournament, and then Saint Cloud kind of got our number. So they've beaten us the last two years at state tournament. But really proud of my players. It's very much a family atmosphere. Everybody gets along with everybody. It's kind of neat. They don't go to school together, but they participate in a sport together. And when they get together, they're very respectful of each other. Grade coaching staff, Kelly O'Donnell, Jim Barghini, Paul Johnson. And they're all teachers. They're parents of them in the district, which is really neat when we're working with special needs with cognitive impairments. It's nice to have a staff that's familiar with how to deal with those students during the day and then also when we have practice. So just really proud of them and the whole team. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight and letting me kind of know about it. We do have games now over at Eastridge High School. Schedule is on the Minnesota State High School League. All three sports are recognized by the Minnesota State High School League. I want to just mention a couple of players who got all-state, all-tournament team. And I'll name the schools they came from. Nathan Ponder from Park High School, Jack Sweetall from Eastridge High School, and Tyler Tanucci from Park High School. And they're all pretty young. They're sophomores. So we should have a pretty good team coming up. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Moving on to a handful of our other winter sports that had state recognitions and honors. We had our boys' basketball team, which was conference and state participants, first time in school history. We also had girls' hockey participate in the state tournament, first time in school history. Our boys' swims team, we sent individuals, and we had some students that placed in the top eight, which are recognized by all-state honors. And we had Casey McGrath in the Hundred Tree and Carter Smith in the Hundred Back Stroke. Our gymnastics also took fourth place at the state tournament. We had an individual, Cassie Kerr, who was fourth on floor, fourth all-around, seventh place on bars, and eighth on vault. She rocked it. It was a phenomenal meet. It was fun to watch. We also, at the state tournament, got to observe a student athlete from another school receive a perfect ten on the vault. It was amazing. Also, we had, first for our wrestling program, they finished, they participated in the state tournament first time as a team. They've had individuals go in the past, but this was the first accomplishment as a team. And then we had three students that finished in the top for our all-state as well. We had Matt Hoag in the one-oh-six category. And then we had Hunter Lyden in the one-thirty-eight weight class, and then Marco Cavalero, who's here tonight. Can you please stand up and be recognized, Marco? He took second place in the state tournament in his weight class. To make it to the championship at a state tournament is amazing. So congratulations to you, Marco. The last award that I did want to connect with is a little bit of a non-tradition sport. It's cheerleading. Our cheerleading program has grown so much, the competitive winter team, that we have five teams. And they all placed, or they were all qualified for state. And our varsity tumbling cheer program took first in their state competition. So we have had a very busy winter season at Eastridge High School. Along with that, one other recognition is our speech state participants. I know Mr. Kimmel had talked about that. We had ten participants that went on to the individuals at state. And we had Cam Stevens placed second, and Sam, let's see, Gabby Franus, fourth place. Megan Rosier, seventh place, and then Natalie Ing placed fifth. And there's all different categories, storytelling, a humorous category, your public speaking, creative expression. So that kind of caps out our winter activities. Thank you so much, and we look forward to presenting this summer and spring. Thank you.
Hello. Again, I'm Marvin Wooton, the Activities Director at Woodbury High School. You know, the winter season seems like it's ten months long. It's very long. And when I moved to Minnesota two years ago, a friend asked me, "Why would I move to Minnesota?" It gets to minus fifty there, and I laughed at him. I didn't believe it. So it happened. So just want to go ahead and go over a few highlights. As Park and Eastridge, we had a very busy winter activity season. A lot of fun, a lot of different events, a lot of different clubs. You know, this winter, we added two clubs to our over fifty-plus clubs that we hold at Woodbury High School. We added our cooking club, and then we also added our TED Talks. On April sixth, just a couple of weeks ago, TED Talks put on an amazing event at Woodbury High School. We had several staff members get up and kind of share personal experiences to kind of inspire the people in the audience. And I just can't wait for more events. Our Athena Award winner, Athena Award winner goes to a female athlete who's exceeded on the playing field, playing court. This year, Grace Beesman, who's lettered in volleyball and softball, was the Athena Award winner for Woodbury High School. We had a ceremony for her and the other Athena Award winners across the suburban east yesterday. Another wonderful event to kind of share in those amazing accomplishments. This winter, our one-act play, they had a wonderful rendition of the importance of being earnest. Again, I continue to be so amazed by, you know, our kids in the one-act play and theater and fine arts all around. With our speech team, we had four students who were named all-state speech. Just want to give them a quick shout-out. Nadia Fresen, Suha Musa, J.C. Gooseon, and Annie Ward. And then in a couple of weeks in May, our speech team will be competing at Nationals down in Texas. in May, our speech team will be competing at Nationals down in Texas. Want to say congratulations to our boys' basketball team. They were named section academic champions. Again, another amazing accomplishment, second year in a row for them. They continue to, you know, succeed on the court and off the court. Our boys' hockey coach, who's also a full-time history teacher in the building, Wes Boland, was the recipient of the Ted Brille Award, which is a very prestigious award in the hockey community, really just a lifetime achievement, just putting forth over thirty years of coaching hockey and just continually to contribute to the sport of hockey. Amazing coach. She's an amazing mentor for our kids and continues to do a great job. Do want to get into some individual athletic recognitions. I invited Tim Rizzo. I'm going to ask him to stand up, Mr. Tim Rizzo. He's a member of our boys' swim and dive team. And before we get into his athletic accomplishments, I just want to say, Tim Rizzo is an outstanding student. He's a member of our Athletic Leadership Council. He continues to do good things in the classroom, and there's no doubt in my mind, he's going to be successful in whatever he chooses to do after high school. But Tim finished second at state in the five-hundred freestyle. He broke the school record this year in the two-hundred freestyle, and he also holds the conference record in the five-hundred freestyle. So I wanted to have Tim here just sharing that accomplishment. Thanks, Tim. Also want to recognize wrestler Brock Reinhardt, who couldn't be here tonight because he's on, he's playing baseball. They just wrapped up. Brock Reinhardt finished second in state in the one-hundred-and-sixty-pound wrestling, very close to winning the state championship. We're very proud of Brock. He's an amazing athlete. He contributes in three different sports. And he's a junior, so we get to have him back next year. So we're pretty excited about that. And lastly, just, I want to kind of send our Black Student Union a shout-out. Two amazing events this past winter. They helped host the HBCU Fair back in November, which I'm not sure if you guys saw the pictures. What an amazing event. And I mean, it's truly, it was truly an amazing night. We got to expose, and not just Woodbury, I would say Twin Cities in general, a lot of schools. Schools from forty miles away came and learned about historically black colleges and universities. Truly just an amazing event, and I'm looking forward to doing more with that. And then also in February, the Black Student Union hosted African-American Celebration. Again, another tremendous event that celebrated African culture. And again, just like so many of our groups, just a talented group, and just very creative in their form of expression. So another great winter for Woodbury High School. Thank you, guys.
And we appreciate the time. And again, just to wrap it up, again, none of these accomplishments would happen if it weren't for a lot of the support that we get. We obviously get a lot of support from the parents and the booster clubs and all these organizations. We get great support from our building administration. We get great support from district administration, Dr. Jacobus, and, you know, Mike Johnson is the assistant soup that works closest with activities and athletics with us and, and helps us out tremendously. And obviously the support we get from the school board. So again, we appreciate the support that you give so that these tremendous student athletes that we have can do all the great things that they do. So I always just want to make sure we put it out there before we take off if there's any questions for the group. Thanks for the time.
All right, five-point-oh, public comment. At this time, individuals may speak to the school board on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. The board will not respond to or discuss your comments. Character abuse, personal attacks, or specific complaints or allegations identifying staff, students, or task force members will not be permitted. Complaints or allegations against students or staff may be submitted to the superintendent in writing. The superintendent may be asked to prepare a response to your concerns. Our policy allows three minutes per person. On the agenda tonight, the board will be voting on the non-renewal of two head varsity coaches. The board recognizes that this is a topic that can generate significant public interest. Pursuant to the board's longstanding practice, members of the public will not be able to provide public comment on this topic tonight because it is an agenda item. However, members of the public are welcome to provide public comment on this issue at the next board meeting where public comment is on the agenda, May twenty-third of two thousand and nineteen. Similarly, by statute, any head coach whose contract is not renewed tonight will not have an opportunity to respond to the reasons for non-renewal at a future board meeting. But just wanted to let anyone in the audience know that if you did send the letters, we've been receiving them, and we have been reading them. Oh, okay. I'm like, that seemed a little weird. Okay. So sorry, we'll read that again. By statute, any head coach whose contract is not renewed tonight will have an opportunity to respond to the reasons for non-renewal. So anyway, we do have some others who have signed up to speak to the board tonight on an agenda, a non-agenda item. And the first one is, and I'm hoping I'm going to get this right, Caitlin Volchlager.
Hello. My name is Caitlin Volchlager, and I'm a senior at Park High School. And I just have a few notes on my phone, so that's why I'm going to be on my phone. So I heard that the German program will be completely cut from Park High School, and it will be partially cut or lowered, or however you say it, at both Eastridge and Woodbury. And when I heard this, it really upset me because German is something that I'm very passionate about, and I never would want to see it go away. For me, I have wanted to learn German since I was probably six or seven years old because it's part of my personal heritage and my story. And my great-great-grandpa came over on a boat. My grandpa spoke German, but he passed away before. He could teach me, and he never taught my father. And I, it was really, it was just a personal subject for me because I've always been really passionate about bringing the German language back into my family and hopefully passing that on. And I couldn't wait until high school where I would be able to learn the German language because I learned the best in the classroom setting. And even though when I was young, I would try to sign up for as many online German learning courses as I possibly could, it never really stuck because, like I said, the classroom is just where it is best for me. And so getting to learn in a classroom setting has had a really great impact on me, and I really feel that I have learned so much from it, learned from my classmates. And I know that so many other people are passionate about too, as there's a group of the German students from Park High in the audience right now as well. And I just think that cutting down languages will, will and can be detrimental to the students because it will narrow, narrow down their options. Like for me, for example, if I didn't have the option to learn German, I would still have to take a language, but none of the other languages are something that I'm very passionate about. And I wouldn't have taken a language for four years, I wouldn't have learned as much of another culture, and I probably wouldn't remember the language as much either. And I just want anyone and everyone who also has these feelings of passion or even just interest to be able to take another language and expand the horizons and not be pushed down the same path. Because I feel like with so many other classes and that sort of thing, you don't have options in that sort. And just schools in America in general, I want students to be able to have those sorts of options and explore their passions in the same way that I was able to. Because if I, if German had been cut before I made it to Park High School, I would never have been able to go as far as I have come, and I probably wouldn't be as passionate about it by now. I might have lost that. I probably wouldn't want to have to just start fresh in college. But since I have been able to learn so much, I'm going to continue my German language learning in college and possibly minor or major in it. And I just think that everyone should have the opportunity to have the chance to learn the German language. And I think that taking away German can, would be a serious loss to the students and the overall community. So I hope that you consider what I have said and consider saving the German program. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I hope you remember me.
Thank you. Kate Burr.
Good evening. I'm Kate Boren. I'm a teacher at Park High School. And I didn't know Caitlin was going to speak tonight, so it's pretty hard to follow that. But I'm here tonight to address the decision, the very recent decision to cut German at Park High School, aside from the fact that German is one of the top five languages requested by U.S. employers and number two globally, aside from the fact that Germany is one of the top economic partners of the United States. Aside from all of these things, I'm here tonight because of my students. I promised my students I would do what is right and what I asked them to do. I asked them, when you believe in something, you work for it and you fight for it. I'm asking the district to fight for student choice tonight. We have over ninety kids at Park High School that registered for German for next school year, and that student choice is not being validated or taken into consideration. I believe student choice to be one of the most important factors for student success and a sense of belonging at school. Not just because of what student choice is, but because I have had countless students come to me when they heard about this decision and concerned parents, many of which were in tears. These kids are curious and passionate about German, as, as is evidenced by them taking a risk to switch out of Spanish that they took in middle school and choose German at the high school level. They want to learn more about German culture, their heritage, and speak the language of their ancestors. As one student told me, German class is my home. With this, with this decision, we are also limiting the IB program that we have been working so hard to expand at Park. Next year, students will have only two choices for languages in order to be a part of the IB diploma program. That limits the number of students enrolling to those interested in French or Spanish. Finally, it is really important for me to point out, our German students are finding success at Park. They are testing out of college courses. They are passing IB exams, traveling to German-speaking countries, living in German-speaking countries, communicating with family members that had, that they hadn't communicated with before. I'm here tonight because I believe with my entire being that student choice matters, and I want to offer my help. I'm happy to do whatever it takes to honor the ninety students that registered for next year and the countless that will come after them. We need to meet the choices of these students as we look towards scheduling for next year. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Sawyer Brum.
Hi, my name is Sawyer Brum, and I'll be talking about the German program at Park High School. I'm a current German student at Park High School in my junior year. As a junior, I will be able to continue my German education next year. Despite this, I wanted to make my opinion heard. German classes helped me throughout high school, and so have the amazing teachers. Fraubor and Frautul have had an astounding impact on my life. They've taught me integrity, compassion, and most importantly, German. To me and my peers, German is more than just a language. It's a culture. In the same respect, we're not just a class. We have grown to become a family. The one, the one thing we share and love is German. Through the amazing effort by Park High School staff, I've exceeded exponentially in German where I could not in Spanish or French. By the end of my second year, I went to Germany, and I had enough of German to speak confidently to the people. Not because it was perfect, but because Fraubor and Frautul had an encouraged space where mistakes were not scrutinized. My sophomore year had many mental health challenges. Depression, anxiety plagued my day-to-day life. I dreaded school in general, and there was always one class I could look forward to. That was German. Something that helped me through my struggles, or it was something that helped me through my struggles and kept my fire burning. The German teachers had a similar impact by always improving my day and my spirit. At the time, the one thing that I loved to do and the one place I felt comfortable. I hope you can all see that German isn't just a class to students. It's a beacon of hope and opportunity. For struggling students, it's not just a class, but a home. The people next to you aren't just your, your peers, they're your family. And Fraubor and Frautul aren't just teachers, they're amazing guardians and mentors. By removing German, you're not removing a course, you're removing opportunities, hope, and a family for those who need it most. Thank you.
Ethan. Sorry, I don't know how to, is it Gil, Gillis? Gillis? All right.
Hello, my name is Ethan Gillis. I am currently a senior at Park High School. I've been learning the German language for four years. My ancestry is from Switzerland. I just want to talk to you today about how German has impacted my life and my passion for it. So when I was seven, I went to the Epcot Center at Disney World. I went to the German immediately because I didn't know it. And I told them, how do I say hi in German? They said guten tag. That means good day, unfortunate. But I attended Olmwood Middle School for two years, and I took Spanish both years. I got a D minus both years. But when I had the option to take German, it opened my eyes to different languages as well. If I take Spanish now, I can understand how the format goes in the sentences because I have the opportunity to take German. And because of that, I've been to Germany twice. I've gotten a scholarship for over sixty thousand dollars for Concordia University in Moorhead. I've gone to Bemidji for Volte for four weeks with no phone, and I, it was tough. I've met long-life friends at Volte. I've met Sawyer at Germany. Of course, he was there when we went. But I still talk to the people I met today because of German. And I'm in a German club outside of school. I've been in more than ten parades just because of that single club. And I hope you take some thought into what I've said today, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Cindy Springman.
Hi, I am Cindy Springman, and my son is a freshman at Park High School. And I apologize, I am not going to be as eloquent and as prepared as others before me because I literally found this out about this meeting at six-thirty from my son. So thanks, Jack. He, he loves German class. He absolutely loves it. He's coming into the school knowing not a soul. And that was the one class he was looking forward to with changing schools and coming in and not knowing anyone. He found a camaraderie there. The teachers were great. He was so excited to learn about the language. And because of what he is thinking of, again, he's in ninth grade, but he has two older sisters, and we've done a lot of college searches and visits. And we've learned a lot in those visits. German is important. Spanish is great. French is great. German is important in the sense that there are kids who want to excel in mathematic-based focused careers, engineering, and international banking, and believe it or not, medical drawing. And in speaking to a lot of these colleges, they're very, very interested in kids that take something other than the status quo languages. By removing this choice from these kids, you're not allowing them to stand out in any way. German is an opportunity for Park to stand out a little bit, keep that class. You've heard the passion from the students. It's a unique group of kids. When my son comes home, he has great things to say about the teachers. He has great things to say about the club. And he's interested, and he's learning, and he's willing to shovel in this horrible winter and do things to raise money because he wants to go to Germany. Again, I apologize that I'm not very well-prepared. But lastly, there's also looking forward to some of these kids that are in my son's boat. He's taken one year of a language. And now, if that German program goes away, he has to switch a language because he does plan to go to a four-year college. And I know of one school alone, he's just lost three thousand dollars in scholarship money because he does not get a four-years of a language. He gets three. And he dreads Spanish. He took it from preschool on through eighth grade. He doesn't want to do it. This is a choice that he made. He has a desire and a passion to do, to learn the German language, as well as it benefits him in his career path that he hopes to follow, and it benefits him in scholarships. It benefits him in applying to colleges. So I guess as a parent, I look at some of those more concrete things, little less emotional things, and I want what's good for him, and I want what's going to help him in the future. But I also want him to have a passion and enjoy what he's doing. And I feel like so many of these kids have to take science. They have to take math. They have to take certain core classes, right? This is a good choice. This is a good opportunity for them to be able to be passionate about what they're doing. And he's also found out from these teachers, there are paths that you can take. St. Thomas offers this very unique opportunity where you can do an engineering and German. St. Thomas offers this very unique opportunity where you can do an engineering and German double major, excuse me, program that my son is just dying to learn more about. So, again, I just implore you to rethink the decision. I don't know what the deci- why the decision was made when I hear that there are ninety students that um, are filling these classes and these kids now have to be put into, from what I've been told, French. That's an awful lot of French. Can we move that back to German? Like you'd consider it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you all. Six point O is our consent agenda. All consent items are considered routine and non-controversial by the school board and will be approved by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, but prior to the board meeting, uh, our board members had the opportunity to review them and could have requested that any be moved to an action item. So we don't have any um, being moved this evening, so I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Move by Ron, second by Pat, all in, whoa, sorry, hang on here.
Yeah, thank, thanks Tracy, one of the items that we're going to approve within our consent agenda item is the approval of the resolution of gifts. And we always like to take the opportunity to thank all those generous donors, uh, this past month. We've rece- we, we have received thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, which gives us a school year total now of over six hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. So again, thank you so much for those generous donations. We also, at the end of our board meeting, actually quote-unquote play the credits of all those people that so generously donated. But we also like to thank all the people that donate their time. You know, we don't track that and we know there's just hundreds of hours that our community gives us in time, so we appreciate all that and thank you from the board.
Alright, so with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So just Alright, so we are at seven point O and as amended at the beginning of the meeting, we will go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point zero five subdivision two B for preliminary consideration of allegations against Coach Number One and private educational data under Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five. So I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, move by Ron and second by Heather, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we will be back.
All right. I will entertain a motion to reconvene our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ron, seconded by Pat. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we're back to 7.1. Resolution non-renewing coaching contract number one, and Mick Walzberger will join us. He's our school board attorney.
And the administration is recommending that you adopt resolution, the first resolution, non-renewing the coaching contract that specified, and we'd ask that you read that and just move forward to adoption at this time, based upon the discussion and consideration that occurred in closed session.
All right. So, resolution non-renewing the coaching contract of Travis Van De Wiley. Whereas the school district hired Travis Van De Wiley to serve as head varsity coach of the Eastridge High School wrestling team for the 2018-19 season, and whereas Minnesota statute section 122A .33 subdivision two states that a person employed as a head varsity coach has an annual contract as a coach that the school board may or may not renew as the board sees fit. Now therefore be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 833, South Washington County Schools as follows. One pursuant to Minnesota statute section 122A .33 subdivision three, the school board hereby declines to renew the annual coaching contract of Travis Van De Wiley. The school board has reviewed a letter notifying Mr. Van De Wiley of the school board's decision and the reasons for not renewing his coaching contract. The school board hereby approves the letter and directs the school board chair to sign the letter on behalf of the school board. The superintendent or a designee is directed to serve this resolution and the approved letter on Mr. Van De Wiley by regular and certified mail within fourteen calendar days after the adoption of this resolution. Alternatively, the superintendent or a designee may hand deliver this resolution and the approved letter to Mr. Van De Wiley. So I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
So moved by Katie and Ron, seconded. So all those in favor, oops, sorry, roll call.
Pat Driscoll?
Yes.
Heather Hirsch?
Yes.
Michelle Woody is absent. Katie Schwartz?
Yes.
Sharon Van Leer is absent. Ron Caff?
Yes.
Tracy Burnett?
Yes, and just a reminder, yes is approving the resolution. Any opposed? No, we already did that, sorry. All right, so based on the vote, the resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. All right, so 7.2 Administrative Recommendation for Non-Renewal Coaching Contract Number Two and the Reasons for Non-Renewal. Attorney will continue.
Thank you. I'm here in my capacity as the board's legal counsel, and my role tonight is to present the reasons for the non-renewal of Matt Eversen, or the proposed non-renewal of Matt Eversen. This discussion typically takes place in closed session, as you know. Today we are having the discussion regarding the reasons for the proposed non-renewal in open session, because the statute that applies here gives coaches the right to demand an open session, and Mr. Eversen has exercised his right to demand an open session. So we will now be discussing the reasons in open session. The law gives you immunity to discuss private educational, excuse me, private personnel data on Mr. Eversen in this forum as it relates to the proposed non-renewal. But we cannot have a discussion of any kind of educational data, so, you know, if there are questions that you have, one of us will be able to respond to them, but not if it would require us to disclose private educational data. So I'd like to now just walk through pretty much line by line of the reasons for the proposed non-renewal. First, Mr. Eversen, based upon substantial evidence, committed insubordination by failing to comply with a directive from the activities director not to contact a family that was seeking to establish residency in the district. The activities director gave this directive after concerns had arisen about potential recruiting violations, meaning violations of the Minnesota State High School League rules, and after concerns had arisen about the eligibility of one or more wrestlers in the program at Eastridge High School. The second reason for the proposed non-renewal of the coaching contract is that the district received information that Mr. Eversen convinced a parent to move into the boundaries of Eastridge High School and promised that the parent's child would be eligible to wrestle then on the team for Eastridge High School. When the parent was later informed that the child was not eligible, the parent was understandably pretty upset. The parent then filed a complaint. The parent provided, or shared with the district, voicemail messages and text messages confirming the information that she had provided. These were voicemails and text messages from Mr. Eversen himself, confirming that he had in fact promised that the child would be eligible. After that matter was addressed with Mr. Eversen, he attempted to retaliate against the family by seeking to have another child removed from a different wrestling program. The third reason for the proposed non-renewal of the contract is that Mr. Eversen inquired about having Eagle Ridge, excuse me, Eastridge High School and a private school enter into a cooperative sponsorship agreement, which would result in the two schools coming together and boosting the numbers of kids who would be in the wrestling program for Eastridge High School. The district's activities director, or the activities director for Eastridge High School, notified Mr. Eversen in writing that the criteria for a sponsorship arrangement were not met, and he then argued with that conclusion and would not let the matter go. So as a result, on October 2nd, the activities director informed him in writing that a final decision had been made, and she directed him to basically accept the decision and move forward. He did not do so. Instead, he persisted in trying to pursue this. He had also told the activities director that the private school had a different point of view in regard to the criteria, certainly implying that the private school was the one who was driving this, that wanted this so badly. What we found out later from a, in writing from the activities director at the private school, that they weren't really even interested in this. They weren't pushing this. It was Mr. Eversen who was pushing it. The fourth reason for the proposed non-renewal of the coaching contract is that Mr. Eversen attempted to have students removed from the district's community education youth wrestling program because they did not live in the boundaries of Eastridge High School. The activities director told him specifically not to remove the students and that community education events were for all students in the district. Ignoring that information and the chain of command, excuse me, command, he attempted to go around the activities director and went to the youth activities coordinator seeking permission to remove the students. The youth activities coordinator gave the same answer as the activities director did. On December 7, 2018, the district gave Mr. Eversen a written reprimand. Among other things, he was reprimanded for violating the chain of command and for demonstrating unprofessional conduct during a meeting that he attended with the principal of Eastridge High School and the activities director. He was also reprimanded for repeatedly violating a directive not to get involved with the Minnesota State High School League in regard to eligibility issues. He violated that directive first by having frequent correspondence with the family about the eligibility of their child. He violated the directive a second time by contacting the state high school league directly. Now, he knew he wasn't supposed to do this, so much so that he attempted to make a call anonymously to the league. The league saw his caller ID, figured out who he was, traced them back to here, and sent an email to him and to the activities director saying that the league does not work directly with coaches on eligibility decisions, and he wasn't to be contacting that way. Undeterred, he turns around and writes yet another email, again violating the directive, writes an email to the state high school league, essentially again advocating that these particular student athletes should be eligible. The next reason for the proposed non-renewal is that he violated a directive that the activities director gave him in regard to a student athlete who was not in good standing. He blatantly disregarded the directive. The next reason is that two student athletes engaged in highly inappropriate conduct while at a wrestling competition toward the end of the year. A third party reported the misconduct to the Minnesota State High School League. The Minnesota State High School League then contacted Eastridge High School and reported the conduct to the district. When asked about it, Mr. Eversen acknowledged he was aware of the conduct and that he allowed one of the student athletes who was involved to wrestle in the competition, despite the fact that that athlete should have been immediately removed from participation in the activity. And finally, Mr. Eversen failed to adequately prepare for the end of the season banquet, and he did fail to prepare by obtaining certificates and letters for team managers. Compounding the issue, he then falsely blamed the activities office for it. Said it was the activities office's fault not to have it when he was the one who had failed to obtain that. So those are the reasons for the proposed non-renewal of the coaching contract. As a matter of law, I would just emphasize to you that both the state and federal courts have held conclusively that school boards have an absolute right to renew or not renew coaches as they see fit. A coach has no right whatsoever to continued employment with the district and no rights to essentially challenge any decision that you might make. The sole right that a head varsity coach has is to come back to request an opportunity to come back at a future meeting and have a reasonable opportunity to say, "Look, I disagree with the reasons and here's why." That's not an evidentiary hearing. It's not calling witnesses, cross-examining witnesses, presenting formal evidence or anything like that. It's simply coming before you and saying, "If he wants to, Mr. Eversen can come in and say, 'I disagree, and here is why I disagree.'" And again, it's, that's a matter of a right that he has, but that's his only right. He doesn't have a right to challenge it, and you don't have to take any action after that, after he does that. But the strong recommendation of the administration is to adopt a resolution non-renewing his head coaching contract, which has now expired for the reasons I've given. I'm happy to respond. Any questions you have? And if I can't respond to them, or if they're better directed, one of the, either the activities director or the building principal can respond as well.
Any questions?
I have, I have a question. So you outlined eight different reasons to recommend the non-renewal of the contract. My question is, why did it take eight reasons to non-renew? Why wasn't action taken sooner? And I'm wondering if any of you can speak to that.
Thank you. We did address the matter in the discipline meeting on December 7th. At that point, several of those bullet points were addressed at that time, but we felt that the season was getting started, and we really wanted to think about the best interest of the students, and we thought if we move forward with non-renewal at that time, as the season was getting started, that would not be what's best for kids at that point. So we continued with the, the discipline process and some expectations moving into the season, and then there were a handful of further incidents that occurred during the season. But we did address it earlier and just felt that because the season was starting, it would be best for the kids to wait until after the season.
And was the coach made aware that that's why we chose to just take disciplinary action and not cancel the contract at that point? Was he, was, did he, from your perspective, fully understand why we were making that choice at that point?
I would, he did sign off on the, the discipline document when we had a post-meeting afterwards, and he, he understood and agreed to those, those terms. Yes.
Thank you.
And I would add that a couple of the incidents occur later in the season as well, and then once the season ends, you know, there's not a rush because the contract has expired. So we, we make sure that we do our due diligence and bring the matter before you. Are there any other questions?
Just more, more of a comment for me personally as we go through this process. And again, I thank the parents for sending emails, but, you know, one of the things is board members and the coaches, the activities directors this evening talked about, you know, why we play. There's a video that everybody has to watch, and the, the one thing that comes out of that video is you don't win at all costs, that you do it the right way. And when I, when I see the allegations here and I see what administration has done, I know the board has to make the decision tonight by law, but there's a, there's a difference between making the decision and the governance versus, versus the management. The board's role really within the overall management of the district is all about governance. And me personally, if I can't support our administrators on all the hard work they're doing by setting high expectations and high accountability, then we're failing as a board to put the right administrators in, in, in place. So tonight I will be accepting this resolution in support of our administrators, of the work that they're doing to set high expectations for this district.
Anyone else? All right. So then we would move on to 7.3, which is our resolution non-renewing contract, coaching contract number two. And I suppose at this point we would just read the resolution.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
All right, so initially we will get a motion for the resolution.
So move.
All right. It's got these in different spots. All right, so resolution, resolution non-renewing the coaching contract of Matt Eversen. Whereas the school district hired Matt Eversen to serve as a head varsity coach of the Eastridge High School wrestling team for the 18-19 season, and whereas Minnesota statute section 122A .33 subdivision two states that a person employed as a head varsity coach has an annual contract as a coach that Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independence School District, number 833, South Washington County Schools as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 122A .33 subdivision 3, the school board hereby declines to renew the annual coaching contract of Matt Iverson. The school board has reviewed a letter notifying Mr. Iverson of the school board's decision and the reasons for not renewing his coaching contract. The school board hereby approves the letter and directs the school board chair to sign the letter on behalf of the school board. The superintendent or a designee is directed to serve this resolution and the approved letter on Mr. Iverson by regular and certified mail within 14 calendar days after the adoption of this resolution. Alternatively, the superintendent or a designee may hand deliver this resolution and the approved letter to Mr. Iverson. Member Katie Schwartz seconded the motion to adopt this resolution, and the following board members voted in favor of the resolution. Once again, voting yes supports the non-renewal, and we have a roll call vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Based on the vote, the resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. All right. 8.0, information items. 8.1 is our revised budget, and our Director of Finance, Dan Pine, will join us.
Good evening, Chair Burnett, members of the school board, Dr. Jacobus, and student members of the school board. Tonight, we will be presenting the 2018-19 revised budget. Don't really have a story for you, though I was, it was baseball season, I was reading a little bit about Yogi Berra, and he had gone out to pizza. I don't know if you know who Yogi Berra is, but you can look it up. And he went out for some pizza, and the waitress asked him, "Would you like that cut into four pieces or eight?" He said, "You better make it four. I don't think I can eat eight." And then his wife asked him, he, his wife asked him where he'd like to be buried. He said, "I don't know. Surprise me." The reason we do the general, the revised budget is so that we don't have surprises when the audit comes. Every year, we are allowed to finalize our enrollment numbers and to check our expenses to make sure everything was accounted for, and then we revise our budgets so that we have a pretty good idea when the audit comes around, how we'll end up with our fund balance. So tonight, I'll present you the revised budget for 1819. As you know, we're always working on three different budgets at one time. We're, we're working on the current budget. We're working on next year's budget as we're doing staffing now, and then we're always finishing up the audit on, on the previous budget. As you know, we've received the certificate of excellence in financial reporting for the last 11 years now, and hopefully we'll make it 12 with the last audit we submitted. We're pretty proud of that, and it's really a tribute to the, to the staff in the finance department and also to all the principals and the office coordinators that help keep things moving along. When you have 20,000 different lines in your budget, it takes a lot of people to keep those numbers in line. So originally, when we did the 1819 budget, we had a budget at about $239 million in revenues and about $236 million in expenses, showing a surplus of about $2.6 million. As we look at the revised budget, as, as you know, we, we try to stay conservative and we try to make sure we catch every expense, and we don't always know what's going to happen. Some things come up along the way. Our revised revenues, although our enrollment is down, some of the other revenues are up a little higher, and we were a little more conservative. Our revised revenues are about 0.3% more than our original revenues, so still $239 million. Our revised expenses are about 1% higher than we originally anticipated, 1.1%. So they come in at about $239, $250,000, showing a surplus right now about $750,000 for the year, which is a difference of about 1.8 million from our previous presentations. Showing, so when I look at my fund balance, it shows a decrease for what we projected of about 1.8 million. This is just our revenues versus the original budget broken down. The local revenues are decreasing by about 1.8%. State revenues increased about 1.4%, a lot of that has to do with, with some adjustments we had to make and then also with special education revenue, which we always kind of project lower than it usually comes in. And then the federal revenues increased about $100,000. So how are we funded in Minnesota, education funding? We're funded by a combination of state aid, local levies, federal aid, and then fees. And that's, all those come together for about $240 million in our district. Now, it's good to remember, and we'll talk a little bit more about it, but the state aid, how is that funded? That money comes as an allocation from the state, as we are a political subdivision of the state. But that money that pushes those dollars is income taxes and sales taxes. Of course, those are collected by the state. But it shows how volatile that could be as income taxes and, and sales taxes are all basically dependent on the economy. And we know that about 10 years ago, when we had the, the great recession, that our, our funding was frozen because the money wasn't coming. It was a volatile, a volatile income source. So let me look at local levies, and this is more of a steady income source, and that's the property taxes. But those have to be approved by the local voters. So there's no, there's no longer a local property tax levy just for education that every district has to do. It has to be approved by an operating referendum. And we're very fortunate to have passed four of them over the years that are staggered. Of course, federal aid comes from income taxes and the fees are local participation and service charges. I won't go through all these. They're examples of the state aid revenues we get. The, the main one is the basic formula. So that's $6,312 per, per pupil unit, or per student, we could say. The reason we call them pupil units is because the, those in grades 7 through 12 are weighted at a higher, at a higher number than those from K through 6. K through 6 is weighted at 1.0, and 7 through 12 is weighted at 1.2. Now, the $6,300 isn't all the revenue we get per student. We get, we get about $10,500 per, per student, but this is the state aid that we hear about when they talk about the funding from the state level. And that's where we get on our little soapbox where I do about what's going on at the legislature. And House File 2400 finally passed last night with, with many amendments, but the, but the wonderful thing about that, about that file was that it's accounting for increase in that formula of 3% in the first year and 2% in the second year. We know that costs a lot of money, but that's the commitment that the, the House has made, the House of Representatives. However, Senate File 7, which is coming from the Senate side, does not allow enough money in there to, to provide those kind of increases to the formula. In fact, their proposal only has about $200 million devoted to K-12 education, meaning that they're only, they're only proposing to increase the formula by 0.5% in each year. So that's, that's a big difference. And when we're talking about percentages, saying, "What does that mean?" Well, on the House side, the 3% is about $190 per student. In the second year, it's $130 per student, where on the Senate side, it's about $31 the first year and $32 the second year. So kind of keep an eye on that. Talk to your senators, talk to any senator and say why. But that's a very important factor for next year's budget. We know what the form is for this revised budget, but that's just something that we're, we're kind of harping on. And by the time we talk about the new budget, we'll probably know what the numbers ended up at. Because now that bill will go to this, once the Senate passes their ominous education bill, they'll sit down together in conference committee and try to hash out what they want to present to the governor. Other types of revenues we get are compensatory aid. That's driven by the number of free and reduced lunch students. Referendum aid, which is a portion of what's been passed by the voters, is picked up by state aid. Local optional revenue aid, and then operating capital aid. So the biggest driver of our, of our revenue is enrollment. Enrollment and that formula we're talking about, because you take that formula amount and you multiply it by the number of students you have or the number of pupil units, but basically you look at the number of students. And we've always, in the last five years, we've been trying to stay very conservative about what we're budgeting for enrollment. Because if, we don't know the numbers until, really, until about December. I mean, we know how many kids are in, in school, but they average it out, and as kids leave, you're going to have less money you'll get paid. So it's kind of tricky when you're, when you're in, in March and April, you're trying to guess for next year. So we have projected about 18,700 students, and, and that's not what it's going to end up at this year. We, we believe it's going to end up at about 18,450 or so. So that difference there is going to show a reduction in our revenue. And then, you know, we kind of use, I use a very conservative system. I don't, you know, look at housing starts and things like that. I basically just try to look at history and, and what the capture rates were. It's called a cohort survival method. Nothing to do with Game of Thrones, just cohort survival. And no one caught that one, but anyway. But it, I did, you know, I was looking through our old projections, and three years ago, when I looked at what I projected three years ago for this year, it was 18,425. So it actually, three years ago, we actually projected what actually is going to happen this year. So we're going to have to be a little more conservative on that. The problem with being too conservative on your enrollment projections is that if the kids do come in, I mean, you have to make moves staff-wise in January and February, so then you have to do your official layoffs and things like that. And then it might turn around that you're going to, you're going to have to, you're going to have to hire people anyway. So it's kind of a tricky game to play. So that's why I talked about the original enrollment, we're at 18,753, and we're looking at about 18,519. Other revenues that we get state aid on that gets up to the $10,500, you know, there's gifted and talented, there's LE, or, the one part they call it LEP, that's the old version, but it's called EL, English Language Learners. It's only $704 per student in that category, and that hasn't gone up for years. And we're starting to see a big distinction between what, what we get for aid and how much we spend in that area, and in fact, the difference in our district is about $3 million. So that, that's a growing cross subsidy. Extended time literacy incentive, permanent school funds, and the special education aid is a big one. We get about $25 million in revenue to put, you know, but we spend about 44 million. So that $19 million gap, along with the $3 million gap in EL, that's all being made up by the general fund. So it's, it's kind of hard to get ahead when you're always kind of fighting against those cross subsidies. As we talked about those revenue sources, and then we talked about how the aid comes in, and you look at, well, where does the state of Minnesota get all the revenue from? Basically, the, it's income taxes and sales tax. So really dependent on the economy, obviously, the blue and the orange there. And then where do they spend their money? Where does our state spend the money, our legislators? The blue is, it's mostly us, K-12, this is about 41%, and then about 30% for Health and Human Services, and you can look at the others on there. We won't go into federal aids a whole lot only because it seems to be the amount we get is shrinking every year. A lot has to do with what's being requested at the federal level. A lot has to do with some of our qualifications are. But we basically get federal aid for title programs, for school nutrition, and for special education. And the federal government is way behind on their promise to, to fund the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, where they have promised to supplant up to 40% of the difference between what the state's giving and what's needed, and they've never really gotten much over 15% of that. We've talked about those. This is what these are for. Federal special education is supposed to offset costs not covered by the state. Title I is for those that are performing below grade level in reading and math. A Title II is professional development. Title III is English language acquisition. And then finally, on the revenue side, our second largest source of revenue in the general fund is our, is a property tax levy, is our referendum levy. With our local optional revenue of 424, we receive $2,260 per ADM. That number doesn't move. We don't have it, an inflation factor stuck in there. So if you look at our state aid of about $140 million, $135 million, and you look at our, our referendum revenue of about $52 million, well, if we go up, say we go up 2% on the, on the state aid side, that's only 2% of, well, I'm not saying only, that's 2% of $135 million, but that 58 is not going to move. And we need all that money to pay our expenses. So we're also about $378 dollars per pupil under the cap. Other ways we get revenue are third-party billing, rentals, fees, and interest. Spenture side, you can look these through. Basically, this is the difference between what we budgeted originally and what we're budgeting now. The salaries is actually decreasing at about $300,000, which is a very close, meaning that everybody that worked on staffing and put together those numbers of the, of the 3,000 employees did a really good job at keeping that close. Not a big difference there. Benefits is going up about $500,000. We don't always know what everybody's going to take for benefits. They have a choice of taking single coverage or, or family coverage. Services increased about 1.6 million. That lot has to do with our LTFM plans, supplies, just to make sure we, I, we don't think we'll spend all this, but just to have the placeholder, and we raise that about $500,000. Our biggest expenditure is salaries, obviously. What drives that the most is class size. You can't emphasize that much. Obviously, if you have larger class sizes, you'll need less teachers. Your salary expenses go down. If you have lower class sizes, you'll need more teachers, and then salaries will go up. Another thing driving our salaries just besides the class size is caseload size. Actually, it's just the numbers of teachers we need for special education. As we look at our numbers, if we have an increase in special education, that costs us more. Of all our salaries, about 70% belong to the, belong to the teachers. That's why contract negotiations are very important as we, as the board negotiates with the, with the unions and we look at the, what would this proposal do? What does that mean to our fund balance? We've played that scenario out many, many times. And then, of course, step and lane systems that are in the teacher's contract play, they add automatic multipliers. So what we're saying is that even if there wasn't an increase to the contract schedule, we would still spend at, at least 1.2% in just step increases. Benefits, just information-wise, it includes health insurance. It includes HSA VIBA contribution, includes TRA, Teachers Retirement Accounts, which we, the, the district has a cut to about 8%. It includes PERA for all the employees, that's about 7.5%. Life insurance, dental insurance. Life insurance, dental insurance, FICA, tax, TSAs, and workers' comp. That's a big expense for us, health insurance, about $26 million. Contract-wise, well, actually, it's about $28 million contract. Not all of it is borne by the district, some of it's paid by the employees, but that's something that we're looking at constantly to see if we can keep that down, keep the increases down. And we, and self-insurance is always a possibility. Other expenses are basically your services, the things you need to do to keep, keep the fires burning, to keep the, the roads, the parking lots clear, to keep the AC on, you know, your, your utilities and your snow removal. Transportation is a big one. Your insurance is staff development. And your supplies, we have classroom supplies and we have general supplies. The general supplies are basically everything we need to repair things. Classroom is kind of obvious. Textbooks come in there and then a lot of fuel we use. You can look at this on your, in your presentation, some more comparative data that we've pulled. So we're, this program we have, we can, they have different categories. We pulled the Metro 48. There's 48 districts in the state that are considered metro. And those, it's considered metro for various reasons, but some has to do with, with funding too, because they use some of that to do the formulas for, they take the 95 percentile of the two different groups, outstate and metro. So comparing with the metro districts, these are expenditures per ADM and it's the different categories that we use for UFRs. And for instance, district-level administration, we rank 45th out of 48th in, in our spending, meaning that, that only three districts in the metro are going to spend less on our district-level administration. We get into the regular instruction and we're at 20th. So we're, we're putting the money more towards the classroom and away from the administration. And you can take a glance through there. Overall, we're, we're about right in the middle. And then if we compare it to statewide, there's 333 districts. And once again, our district-level administration is 312 and our regular instruction is 66. So, it kind of shows you where the money's going. Special education, we're at 97th. And this is per ADM, so that's nothing to do with, something to do with how big you are, but it's not just pure dollars. It's all per ADM compared to statewide. This is just a, a graph here with select districts, comparable districts, as far as where our special education cross subsidy is per ADM. And that's what I was talking about, where this is the aid we get and this is how much it costs us for special ed. And we're at about $806 per, per ADM. And more towards the, towards the high side of the chart. So, what are our concerns right now? Well, enrollment, that's always my biggest concern as we monitor the enrollment, make sure we count all the kids we have, make sure that we're getting all the money we should for each, for each student. And then examining the effects of things like PSEO, in which the students are allowed to go to, to college during their high school, during their high school time and, and looking at online learning and things like that. So we're always looking at enrollment, maximizing that. We have discretionary compensatory funds that if they're not spent, we need to make sure we carry those over. We've instituted, well, five years ago, we instituted purchase cutoffs so that after April 15th, we don't allow any more spending for this fiscal year. If they needed it for school, they should have had it by now. Obviously, for stuff that you have to have, you know, that, that runs out, you know, for fax class and things like that, we have to allow them to buy milk and eggs and things like that. But it's kind of helped. I mean, it, it's really helped us get things organized, things like that. And then, of course, contract negotiations. So how's it going to end up fund balance-wise? Here's a chart of the history of our fund balance. And at the end of last year, we, we were at about $8.4 million, which on the gross level was 3.7% of our operating expenditures. Now, this unassigned amount is the amount of which they judge SOD on, which can't be negative 2.5. So we really don't know how we'll end up unassigned until we see where all the restrictions goes. And really what it means is you have $9 million, but you have to look at some of the dollars that have to be restricted in certain areas. So those wouldn't be assigned. Those are, those are assigned and then what we could judge as unassigned. So we really don't know until we settle out to see how much money we have left in things like staff development or operating capital, things like that. So we, we're thinking we'll have a fund balance of about $9.1 million and, and hoping to get up, excuse me, up over $10 million. Other funds quickly, school nutrition, you can see the numbers there. They have a slight increase in their fund balance, about 1.38 million now. That money can be used to buy equipment, which is solely needed when you have so many different, different kitchens. When you have, you know, 25 kitchens, you have lots of walk-in coolers and things like that. Community services was down to about $24,000, but we, we believe that they'll be at about $250,000 at the end of the year fund balance. And the construction is, is just a, it's an in and out. I mean, so we don't want to carry a balance, I mean, we carry a balance there if we don't have all our projects done. So we have about $9.2 million left in there. Other factors that have influenced the fund balance that may change from what I'm telling you now would be legislative outcomes, that's more of a next year thing, once we go over the next year's budget. 1% of the formula for us is about $1.3 million. The cross subsidy for special education, the Senate file, the House file 2400 actually has a provision for special education cross subsidy aid. And that would be something that will go rate against. Anything that, that happens in there is going to free up more general fund money. Other kind of revenues like preschool, then of course, contract negotiations, that's kind of a broken record there and then unfunded mandates. What do we do next? We'll have you approve this revised budget at the next board meeting. We're, we're meeting behind because of the one that, that was, we normally would have approved it tonight, but we didn't, we weren't able to present it two weeks ago. We'll complete all our staffing, it's pretty much done. Now the, the HR just has to figure out who has to go where with all the complicated bidding and things like that. But the number of staffing has, has been allocated, so we complete our staffing for next year's budget. Once we find out what the legislature's going to do, we calculate our state, our state revenues and tells how much money we have to deal with. And then we'll do a first reading at the June 6th board meeting of the 1920 budget, 2019-2020 budget. And then, of course, the audit will begin on the 1819 budget in July. So that's, that's our revised budget. And like I said, we'll ask you to approve it at the next board meeting, next chance we get. And I'll come back to you later with another, some other budgets to approve. They'll actually be 1920 budgets. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Maybe just a quick comment. I know Dan presented this to the CFAC group on Monday. You know, and again, the, the group is very interactive and, you know, they're, they're still concerned about the fund balance just like we are too, so. But they felt really comfortable with the direction of the, the district and these adjustments moving forward.
And I'll tell you, we're continuing to look at efficiencies and contracting where we can. But those comparisons of the districts, districts around the state, as you know, we've been 48 out of 48. So, that's, that's interesting how that has shifted. But, but it doesn't matter one way or another, the administrative. What matters is when you look at the classroom. Very proud of where we shorted out over the 300 districts and where we spend our funds for student support in the classroom and where the dollars are the most effective for kids.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
8.2 is our negotiation update and Katie Schwartz will provide that update this evening.
South Washington County Schools is committed to providing regular updates for the collective bargaining agreement negotiations with the United Teachers of South Washington County. The district and UTSWC share a common interest, the success of all students, and we are committed to working together to reach an agreement that will benefit our students and those who contribute to their success. The negotiations committee members from District 833 and UTSWC met for the fourth time on April 24th. At the meeting, members of UTSWC responded to contract proposals from the district. Through a positive and collaborative discussion, UTSWC tentatively agreed to numerous items regarding contract language. The next time members from both committees will meet is on May 13th. We will give an update on that meeting at the May 23rd school board meeting. The district will also continue to provide regular updates as the negotiation discussions proceed on our website at www.sowashco.org under the School Board section.
Thank you very much. 9.0, discussion items. 9.1 is the approval of the long-term facilities planning, guide, planning, guiding change?
Good evening, Chair Burnett, school board members, Dr. Jacobus, student representatives. On the actual agenda, it said approval, but it was under discussion. And so it is truly a discussion of the long-range facility planning guiding change document. Please note that this is being presented as a draft and as the steering committee gathered just to talk about where we're at, where we want to be, and the not how in that center column, there were a lot of things that we discussed and talked about. So in, by no means is this comprehensive at this point. The goal is that by June 6th, we would have an approved long-range facility planning guiding change document. So that means that we have over the course of the next month to work through this. The district has contracted with Davis Demographics to update enrollment projections and complete a full infrastructure study of our schools. And that is currently underway. And we've gotten updates from both Kwame and Dan Heinz in terms of how that process is going. The board and community will be updated on the projected enrollment and the outcome of the infrastructure study once it is completed. In addition, the report will be shared with the steering committee and task force as we ground ourselves in the future growth of the district. The guiding change document that is attached is being brought, brought forward to begin our conversation together. This document was drafted, as I shared, by the steering committee. So due to the format of how we're sitting this evening, sometimes it's nicer to have that workshop where we can have a discussion at the tables. What I'd like to do is just to start with the current reality and then move into the results, the what. And then I'd like to probably spend the most time talking about that center column, the not how, because that really is when we bring a plan forward, what is, what is it that the board wants to see or doesn't want to see? So just to start with the current reality, you can see that that particular column, the first one, where we're at, it is really inclusive right now. And you could even note that there were some spaces left off. We're waiting for projections, of course, of houses, houses being built in our community, along with some of the details around the bullet points that talk about increased enrollment at our various schools, our decreased enrollment in our Southern End schools. We want to be able to nail that down a little bit more once we get the information from Davis Demographics. You'll also note in that first column, we right now have pulled out special education. There are some significant needs in terms of what exists right now. And so we had some conversation about how can we make those three bullet points for special education be a little bit more inclusive? Because we're talking right now and gathering needs across the entire district. So I will just ask the board, in column one, as you reviewed it, were there any thoughts or any things you felt like maybe missing or needed to be adjusted?
Nothing really needs to be changed. I did like the idea of the, under the special ed, looking at the Fed 4. I've kind of always felt like I wish we could keep kids here. Having a special needs son that had to go, I mean, he got to stay in district but had to switch home schools and never got to go with siblings. I mean, you kind of, you feel that. And when we talk about personalization and all that things and keeping kids here and.
And we feel that now because a lot of the locations that we contract with are full as well. And so, you know, we're having conversations around now what. And so what you'll see in that, in that first column, if, just to remind the group that whatever's in that column, what we want to do then is to project ahead to, so we have these needs with federal setting for special education. What is it that we want to get to? And so what would that look like as a school district? So thank you. Ron?
Just a clarification with the, the elementary level, is that interpreting even like pre-K? When you guys look at elementary or?
Uh, but right now, Ron, we did not factor pre-K in. It's just the overall, actually, pre-K is factored in there because those students are in the school. So if we looked at some of those schools where we have decreasing enrollment, it is anywhere from, I would say, 100 to 200 students below the capacity that could be at those schools. And so when we talk about decreasing, we'll actually define what decreasing means by specific numbers. But right now, all of our elementary schools, I believe we're at that point. I know we had one that wasn't, I believe they all have pre-K in the schools now. Typically, one or two sections and then along with the pre-K, we also have special education. So you will see in that column that there's a need for early learning. You'll hear that come up often, that we need more space and consistent space for early learning. Because what happens is every year, our early learning staff has to go out to every elementary school and say, okay, where is there space this year? Do you have space this year or have your sections gone up? And so it's always kind of a shuffle back and forth if our early learning programs and classrooms have the space they need.
Keith, will we have any guidance from the legislature again around mandatory pre-K?
I don't, I haven't seen, Dan, if there's language in the bill about mandatory things or what they're, they're looking at mandates this session, different from what's currently in place? Right.
But that, but that's something we got to really keep our, our finger on the pulse there. Because again, you know, as these proposals keep coming up statewide, all of a sudden, to me, they've never still considered the space needs of where do you, yeah, you can say it's mandatory, but then where do those kids go? So and again, do we have to pass bonds to, you know, make sure we have the space then? If that ever became reality and is a state willing to fund it too then?
I think the space is one thing and I certainly have, I've done all the needs assessment with elementary, secondary, and middle. The space, but then the storage that goes along with having students and just the different equipment and curriculum resources that teachers need. You know, what kind of space do we have to store those things?
And, and that discussion, when the, the last session and the sessions before, as they discussed this, one of the, the answers was that it doesn't always have to be provided in your public school. There are private pre-K providers and different things and could you partner with them? So, it is something to keep in mind. We'd like to have all our kids in all of our schools. And what's hard on parents too is that they may be at one school for preschool, but their boundary school where they're going to go, there, there is another school and they feel like the parents are always concerned about that because their children make friends and, and then they're going on to kindergarten in that school and we're going someplace else. So that is always an issue with trying to provide. The best case scenario would be to have pre-K in every school, enough room and, and so kids could just matriculate into kindergarten and stay with everybody who was going to school there. Julie, one thing, I'm sorry I missed this. The construction of New Altman Middle School, the budget constraint came ahead of time. We knew how much money we were going to ask. So it wasn't that we were planning to do the 1,300. We always thought we'd build the wing like we did with Eastridge. But we knew that we couldn't, there wasn't going to be that ability to, to go out for a bond at that time. So just wording here, but as you read it, it looks like we had to scale back after budget was put together.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Let's head to the, the right column or the last column, the where we want to be. And so there, again, it talks just about having a plan that lasts an additional five to 10 years. It talks a lot about the unmet needs, which is why Dan Pye and Dan Heinz, Kwame Aym, we are all out having conversations with our athletic and activity directors, our high school principals, middle school, all of our departments, transportation, nutrition services, teaching and learning, to talk about what those needs are. Probably the, the overall summary of where we want to be. If I could sum it up in just a couple of points, it would be, our work will be evaluating our current efficiencies of our facilities to meet student needs. And that goes along then with that last bullet point that talks about early learning space. It talks about special education space and making sure that we're fully utilizing the spaces that we have.
Julie, I don't see special education called out in that last column in the way that it is in the first column. So I would want to make sure that that's addressed since we have that section.
Thank you.
Beginning. Otherwise, I, I thought it made sense connected that.
And so you can see in the bullet point that second to the. And so you can see in the bullet point, that second to the end, it talks about having a facility plan that is through 2028. And so again, now we're projecting out even further from our last, but it's a continuation of where we were at. And the center is typically where we have the most conversation, because that really provides us with, when we move forward, when we're doing our work, what kind of guardrails do we have to stay within? And so we actually discussed the first point a lot, and that is, we would not bring multiple plans, so the steering committee would not bring multiple plans forward, rather one plan that is being recommended by the steering committee. And we had some conversation, input was given, that was received via other districts. And they talked about, sometimes when you bring facility plans forward, it actually pits schools or facilities against each other. Therefore, the recommendation, after we had a conversation with the steering committee, was that to the board in the final presentation, we would bring one recommendation forward. That's not to say that we wouldn't consider, along the way, other recommendations, but then we would present the board with one. And we certainly are open to conversation. That really is the board's decision. If you would like to direct the steering committee to have two or three, that's something that we can have a conversation around. Bullet point two, to not propose a plan that creates inequities in learning opportunities between schools at the same level, elementary, middle, or high, to not alter the existing grade configurations, and not to create space that intentionally separates special education students from regular education students. Any comments, particularly the first bullet?
That's the one that I, I don't know how to word this. I'm okay with one, I'm okay with two, I'm okay with three, I'm okay with whatever is what the steering committee decides. My only concern with one is, I don't want to have one, I mean, before we've had plans that were equally okay, or equally good, or either, any of the plans we could live with. I don't want one plan brought forward that's like, this is it, and if not, we have to go back to the drawing board. Because I don't want to spend all that time, and I know the last time we did this, it was a lot of time that was spent, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's just things, and if the board would vote it down, and then where do we go? And I know we'll have lots of conversation about it, but that's my only concern.
The thinking is that as we went through the process, we would still be operating with more than one plan, two, three, four, or five different options, but that the final recommendation would be in the form of one.
Yeah, and that's what I was...
And again, we were really thinking just in terms of efficient use of our facilities as we look at some of our facilities and buildings that are decreasing in enrollment, and then looking at all the needs we have in the district.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I was assuming this was going, but I mean, just reading it, I was like, because other ones have come forward that said, we won't bring just one plan forward.
And that actually, and just to refresh the boards, Mary, that is what was on the last guiding change document for the last time we did long-range facility planning. And so that decision is really left up to the board to give us those guardrails.
But to your point, Katie, there'll be other plans that if we brought a plan forward and the board said no, there'd be a plan right, the next one that we'd come back with. And I think with keeping you informed along the lines, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't have any idea, and then all of a sudden we came for the approval. So we wanted to be a collaboration. There's a lot of people that have been, that have added their voice, and we have a lot more work to do with, with making sure we're getting input and people understand some of the issues. And the demographers look at this to determine some of the issues we're struggling with, with the uneven growth in our system, will be helpful too. But that's a good point about, if we came with one plan and then we were, we were at a loss when it wasn't approved, we wouldn't want to do that. And that could be, maybe there's a different wording on how we do that, if we say that.
And maybe a clarifying for me then to tag on that, I'm assuming one plan, but inside the plan, there's gonna be recommendations of how the years kind of flow out. And to me, that's where I think the debate could happen then is, because there's the funding component too, that won't be there, and we're gonna have to decide where we want to go for. What questions do we want to bring forward? And that'll adjust the plan inside of the plan. So I, I guess I'm envisioning one overall strategy for the 10-plus years, and in there, then there's gonna be a prioritization that the group is bringing, and that's where the board can say...
That's where the picking and choosing.
Yeah, now we gotta move this up or move that down. We can afford this, can't afford that, based on what we feel as a school board at that point. So that, that's the way I would envision it coming forward.
Any other items in that column that you can think of? And this is, like I said, this is a first time, because I think we all need to think about this. We've relooked at this a couple of times. Heather?
I have a couple of comments. In the second bullet, we talk about inequities between schools at the same grade level. And earlier you talked about defining terms. I think it's really important that we talk about what inequities mean and what our goal is, for the steering committee to really talk about that. Whether it means we have the exact same program and content at every elementary school, or whether it means that we're looking at the individual needs of each of the schools, and we're doing our best to meet those needs, so that it's really clear what that, what that means when we say that. I think it's also important for the steering committee, and I'm not sure if it would come as a bullet point, or as part of the conversation, that we are really clear about access to different services for students and families, and then also that we're thinking about unintended consequences potentially of some of these proposals, based on not just our students and the families, but also the community at large. And so I think, I feel like knowing you and knowing the process, that those will be in there, but I think it would be important to state that. And my last thing is a weird thing, so your fourth bullet is not written in the negative?
Yes.
So I would change that or...
I already have that in my notes.
So you really don't want to do the grade configuration?
I'll tell you what, I was with high school and middle school youth advisory students today, and we were talking about, you know, what does District 833 do well, and then what could we improve on? And the boundary word came up. And it's interesting, because I think there are so many misunderstandings about the size of our district, where the growth of our district is, and why you might see one school but have to go to another school. And so that's difficult to understand when you don't look at our district as a whole, and you might just live in your community, and you see this particular elementary or middle school and think, why do I have to, I'm right there, but I'm on the other side, so therefore, with the growth all being on the eastern side of the district, everything has to get pushed this direction. And so I heard that boundary word, and I thought, oh no. So no, I'm not open to a grade configuration, but you know what, that's up to the board. So Ron, if...
No, I, no, no, I think having the grade configuration we have is outstanding.
Yeah, I think it's great.
It'd just be nice if there was a way to, you know, I know they can do with houses, pick them up and move them, but certainly with an elementary school, you can't, you can't just pick them up and move them.
We've talked about schools on wheels.
Pick them up and move them.
We could only find an architect that do, could do schools on wheels.
So the only question I had about that is, you know, obviously, we have Liberty Ridge that has their own like kindergarten type. Would that eliminate that option if it existed somewhere?
The second site or site two?
Yeah, so I mean, if we had a school that was full, we needed maybe to have a kindergarten center for that particular school as well. Would that eliminate that, because we would be removing, in essence, one grade from that building?
And so, to this point, Tracy, that, and that same line was in our last long-range facility plan, and we look at that even though it's, you know, a block away, we still look that, like that as one. But I think that is another facility or location, school, if you will, that we'll be taking a look at as Liberty Ridge's overall enrollment goes down. I think the original goal was that the students would all be housed at the one site. But again, depending on growth, we'll have to take a look at that.
But it isn't, as Julie said, it's really a space in addition to the school. It is a nice option in the future, if we had early childhood centers connected with our current schools. There's some great elements of that. And I think this gives flexibility to take a look if that was ever something you wanted to do, and not keep, not think of it as a complete separate school. If we had a bridge over the street there, we'd work a little better.
One of our coaches who is here this evening, he actually says he travels back and forth between the main site, and he said he just runs down the hill, and then he comes back up, so it's a back and forth. Any other items for this evening? Otherwise, we will go back, draft, work with the group, wait for the demographers, and then we will bring you a more finalized product next time.
And I'd ask you too, if you're thinking about this and you have a thought, just send it to Julie, and we can incorporate that in the discussion. You don't have to wait for the next meeting.
And also, working with our communications department, we have, I think, 25 to 30 names of people who are interested in being on the long-range facility planning. So our hope is that with the task force, we would start that work in August. And again, this is going to be the most comprehensive and largest group that we've worked with, bigger than our other, when we do our guiding change document and our processes. This one is the most comprehensive, because part of the task force also includes district level administrators. So district level administrators and people out in the school system, our teachers, will all be on that committee, along with parents and community members.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ten point oh, action items. Ten point one is the approval of several policies. Assistant Superintendent Mike Johnson?
Good evening Chair Brunet, board members, Dr. Jacobus, and student representatives. This evening, we've got the eight policies that are considered Minnesota School Board Association non-substantive changes, and these changes reflect updates to legal and cross-references, changes to the notes within policies, and very minor corrections. The substance of these policy, this policy language is not affected at all. Our board policy committee members had reviewed these policies earlier this month, made some recommendations for board information and subsequent action. The first reading was last week, on April 18th. Current policies are located online this evening. Administration wishes to seek approval on all eight policies.
All right. We'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
It's moved by Pat and seconded by Heather. Any questions or comments, discussion on the policies? All right, hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Ten point two, approval of 2019-20 long-term facility maintenance, operating capital, debt service, and trust fund budgets. Director of Finance, Dan Pye.
Good evening again. This item is actually, we just presented you a revised budget to look over for a couple of weeks and approved. This is actually the budget for 1920. There's some sections of it that we'd like to get approved before the whole budget gets approved, just so that we can, we can plan and start making our plans and start working on some of these projects. We won't actually be expanding the money until 1920, which starts on July 1st. However, we have to do bids and all that stuff and get things together. So these budgets, I'll just go with the budgets real quickly and what they actually are. So the first one is the long-term facilities maintenance budget. Long-term facility maintenance is a program that was approved in state legislature. For us, it replaced what was called alt facilities. So the 20, about the 25 largest districts in the state had an alt facility program in which the board could approve projects and pay for it with a combination of levy and state aid. We, it changed the long-term facility maintenance, but for the larger districts, we were grandfathered into the old program. So we're using a different name, but it's the same program we've been, we've been trying to run for years. Now these projects can only be, the money can only be used to repair existing facilities or replace things like, it has to already be here, so we can't add things to it, we can't build with this, with this money. We, we do have some proposals, our group does, our business officers group has some proposals to the legislature. So can you, you know, can you put specific items in there? Like, it'd be nice if, you know, if we do with these issues with preschool, if we could, you know, construct some of those kind of things, or more restrooms, but we've never got much traction on that. But that's just the way it goes. As you can, if you look at the list, when you get a chance, you can see that it's quite extensive, you know, when we had this many buildings, and the list for the long-term facility maintenance is in your packet, and it adds up to about $18,235,000. So that's funded by a combination of levy and state aid. And the way we run it is, we will bond every two years for some of it, and then the part that we, that we can do a straight page, go levy, and then any kind of aid that comes in on those. So you can see the projects in there, they cover everything from health and safety to, it's mostly replacing windows, replacing parking lots, and fixing HVAC systems. One little thing that we were able to do with this plan, because the plan never ends. I mean, we have, we'll submit a tenure plan that you'll approve in July to the state, but it's always gonna be there. As soon as you fix one thing, you gotta fix something else. So they really push us, Kwame really pushes us to get more and more in there, but we just can't fit stuff in. Well, at the end of the, end of the day on our major construction project, in which we had a $96.5 million bond, and then with other funding, came up to about $112 million, we do have, we do have money left in those construction accounts from that last vote. And the reason we have money left is because of great management by Mike Vogel, but also because we earned interest. We earned pretty good interest, the markets got better, and we did pretty well. Well, that's leaving us with a balance. So by law, we can only spend that money on middle schools, because that's what was in the question. So we were able to shift some of the long-term facility maintenance middle school projects into the bond, and you can see that in that list below there. That allowed us to put some other projects that need to be done, move, shift them up a year. So it was, we're kind of fortunate to have that, and we want to make sure that we utilize all the dollars in the construction fund. So that's the long-term facility maintenance budget. The health and safety budget's incorporated into that. It's in the list, it's, the code's 347 to 368. So those are the things that are ongoing, playground equipment, repair, it's fire inspections, asbestos removal, things like that. We also have what's called the operating capital budget, which, as I told you earlier, that we get aid to fund that and levy to fund that. And that left, I put that budget in there for you to approve. And the reason we wanted to prove that is so people can start ordering things that would be bought with the operating capital budget. And that, as you can see by the list, that has things ranging from, from building grounds equipment to technology, to textbooks, all the things that are in this list adds up to about $5.5 million. And then the other budgets that we're asking you to approve, more just on tradition here, is the debt service budget, which has to be done so that, you know, we can make our proper bond payments. And the debt service fund, basically, it's an in and out, in which we levy for bond payments, that money goes in the debt service fund, and then we make the payments out of there. And then the trust fund budget is our fiduciary responsibility, and that's mostly for scholarships. The scholarship donations are made through this fund, and then the scholarships are paid out of it. So those are the four funds that we were asking you to approve tonight, so we can get kind of a head start on, on our building projects and everything else. Do you have any questions on that?
One quick one. I'm really excited and happy to see that we're looking at the athletic fields now, because we are, so the turf is starting to get worn. So it's nice to see that Park, because Park High School was the first one that we brought the turf on, so that's on this, you know, from a line item perspective. The question I have is more around, once we approve this tonight, that'll open up the bidding process? Are we putting any, any stipulations on what we're gonna be looking at from a turf perspective? I remember when we first brought the turf in, it was a different type of quality, a different type. And as we went through the three-year process of, you know, the second year it was Woodbury, and then when Eastridge was done, it was a different type of turf because of the quality...
Yeah, so we, we've already started working on that and plying ahead, because we had to kind of decide on what kind it would happen to be, because they actually have to make the turf, and they make it in different ways, and it's all somewhat fascinating how they do it. No, we're going with the, with the other turf. We're going with the turf that we have at the other two schools.
Okay.
Field turf is called. And that has to do a lot with too, is, it might fall to a bid process, although the field turf is on, is on the source well, which was the National Joint Powers Alliance, so it's been bid already, so we don't have to bid it out. We just, we, what we did was we bid out the installation.
Gotcha.
But yeah, we're going with the field turf now. It's a much safer product, there's some great innovations, and you have to kind of choose what level, the mixture of the sand and the gravel and stuff like that. They walk around with their suitcase of turf and show you the different things. their suitcase of turf and show you the, the different things.
And I think they've looked at different materials too because of the ground-up tires and the heat of the fields.
The chrome rubber.
Yeah, some of the different advances for this next field.
Nice. Okay.
All right. So if there aren't any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move the motion.
It's moved by Ron, seconded by Katie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Eleven point oh, reports and comments. Eleven point one is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just want to briefly talk about graduation rates. Brian will do more in-depth as we go, as he always has. And we have a, a little bit more in-depth explanation on our website. But the grad rates, as you know, were released this, just recently. And, and just as I, I tell you where we are again, it's, it's the four-year cohort rate. Once you start as a freshman, you have to finish within those four years to be counted in that rate. I'm very proud that we continue to work with kids for a fifth year, a sixth year, seventh, and to try to help them finish. And then again, we have our adult diploma center where people can come at any age and finish a real diploma. We're not looking at GED, although we do provide that service if that's something a student wanted to pursue. So we, we don't give up on the kids. They have plenty of opportunities. And as you know, sometimes there's a lot of things that, that happen in life that you may get behind in four years, may not work for you. But it might, you might finish at the end of June, right after your fourth year. So that's never reflected. But we're proud of our rate. Our students in our school district continue to graduate at a higher rate than their peers across the state. Our district for two thousand eighteen had a four-year graduation rate of ninety-two point oh-eight percent. And that included one thousand two hundred and sixty-seven graduates. The percentage remains well above the state average of eighty-three point two oh percent and places our district second among comparable districts. These, these numbers continue and as Brian has complimented our, our teachers and the work that they do in, with our credit recovery if students get behind. But all our interventions and as we've talked about staffing, we have, and the spending in the classrooms, we have a number of interventions that we try to work with students if they start to struggle so they can stay on track to graduate. In two thousand eighteen, Eastridge High School had a graduation rate of ninety-six point two seven percent. Park High School had a graduation rate of ninety-one point five five percent. And Woodbury High School had a graduation rate of ninety-six point five one percent. Both Park and Woodbury High Schools saw a slight increase in their graduation rates from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. Eastridge and Woodbury High School are also ranked in the top ten for graduation rates in Minnesota schools with graduating classes above three hundred students. Woodbury High School ranked eighth and Eastridge High School ranked tenth in the state. The, our graduation rates also include South Washington, South Washington Alternative High School, which had a four-year graduation of thirty-nine point one-three percent for two thousand eighteen. And again, that sounds really low, but remember that our kids coming in are behind. It's, it's unrealistic that, that if kids got behind in credits and, and we're looking for that alternative that they could finish in four years. These are very bright kids and for a variety of reasons, they got behind. And then we continue to work with them to, to complete. In addition, thirty-two point six one percent of students who have been studying at the alternative high school for four years plan to continue their work-chartered diploma. So we keep them in and they, and they can continue for the fifth and sixth year. So our staff at the alternative high school and the students do a, a wonderful job. But at that, at the point, sometimes mathematically to finish in four years becomes impossible, not because of ability, because of a lot of the, the different life aspects that make it difficult to finish in four years. Again, for our students in the class of two thousand eighteen, they also graduated at a higher four-year rate than their peers statewide. And all of our groups of students that are identified by MDE are, are different ethnic and racial groups, the Hispanic students, black students, and, and white students. So we are very proud of the rates. We have still work to do to make any of the, the groups, the, the opportunity gaps and the gaps there zero. But we're moving forward. And as I said, Brian will spend more time with us at a later date in depth in taking a look at those rates. And I saw just today that Brian and Kelly were talking on the phone to each other and their office are right next door. So they just have a wall between them, but they were talking. I think grad rates, wasn't it? In the presentation? Yeah. So we are so efficient that we don't even get up. We just can go right to the phone. There's a lot more to the story. I, I called Kelly from outside her office just to talk to her. She didn't pick up the phone though.
Thank you. Eleven point two, our school board, student board. Ay yi yi. I can read student board reports. So we'll start with Hannah.
Hi. That's on now. Okay. So basically at Eastridge, we're kind of winding down and starting up with a lot of things going in. We're planning for the new year. And so we're doing link crew recruitment, which is a really cool process because basically we pick like the most welcoming students from our junior class and our sophomore class. And basically we let them welcome the freshmen in the fall. And it's a really cool process to watch them choose those students. And then our prom is on Saturday, which is really exciting. Looking forward to that. And we have grand march too. And because that's coming up, we have a safe driving seminar that's going to happen tomorrow about like texting and driving and not drinking and driving and stuff like that, which I think is really important. And it was really good planning to do it the same week as prom. And then our juniors took the ACT on Wednesday, which was fun for the rest of the school because they didn't have to show up. But it's a really good opportunity that they offer that in high schools. Our play will be opening next weekend and we're having Peter Pan. And it's really cool because they have like these harnesses that they put and they actually like fly. And I've seen videos and it looks amazing. And they're going to go on Friday and perform at Lake, which I think is a cool outreach program. We had a dunk and three-point contest, which aired on CBS. And there was all these different things and I saw tons and tons of photos and it was such a fun event. And it was such an honor to be picked to host that. And our track meet, we had our first track meet, home meet of the season on Tuesday. And we've had, I think we had four other meets this week alone. And all of our sports are competing and doing really well. There's a lot of competition going on right now. And we just recently had our National Art Honor Society Art Showcase of the Year. So we had all of our AP students and all of our Honor Society students. And all of their work is so incredible and so creative. And it's just an awesome thing to see and be showcased.
Okay. At Park, today we had a senior meeting for all the seniors this year. So we got to learn a lot about graduation and everything it entails, along with just what happens after you leave high school. So it was really interesting. Yesterday, like Hannah said, was the ACT day for juniors. But then we offered a stamp test at Park this year and that's for your language, which our Spanish kids got to take French and German. And so I also got to take that yesterday. So it was really cool. And that will, those results get back to you right away. And then that proves whether you'll get like a seal of bilingualcy from the state of Minnesota. So that's why we decided to take that test. And then we also had our junior book awards today. And so we had seven students honored there this morning. And that's always really neat. And we had a lot of winners for that. Tomorrow, we have the opening musical of Little Shop of Horrors. And anything that our theater puts on is really good. And I'm really excited about it. And then just like Mr. Kimmel said when he was here, we had two triple A award winners announced, Hannah and Alex, both I got to go to elementary school with. And Hannah's one of my best friends. So it's really great to see her do that. And then lastly, coming up, we have prom on May eighteenth. Our theme is Great Gatsby. And we'll have grand march and everything. So it'll be super fun.
Um, at Woodbury, this is so loud. Um, yesterday, just like all the other high schools, we took the ACT, juniors did at least. Um, as much as people may not like testing, it's always great to take that test for free because having to pay for it kind of makes the experience a little bit worse. Um, spring sports are in full swing, lacrosse, baseball, ultimate frisbee. They just all have games every week, practices. Um, seniors are beginning to prepare for graduation and we'll vote on class speaker May first. They're also going through the motions of cap and gown distribution and honor sashes. And so there's announcements and developments and stuff like that every day. Today at lunch, the League of Women's Voters was at a table to help students who are eligible, registered to vote for the upcoming election, which was exciting. And similar to Eastridge, we're starting the process of preparing for next year where applications for student council and link crew are going on, as well as in our music programs, all three musics, like band, choir, orchestra, have audition classes. So they're called concert choir, band, or orchestra. And so auditions start within like the next two weeks. So people are preparing for those. Our spring play opens May second. It's Appointment with Death by Agatha Christie. So, cool. And this past month, April thirteenth, we had our, we had people go to the state speech tournament. And we had our first state champion. And so that was really exciting. We're very proud of her.
Thank you. Twelve point oh, future meeting dates. May ninth is a regular school board meeting and May twenty-third is a regular school board meeting. Thirteen point oh was a closed session that we moved to seven point oh earlier in the meeting. And if there's nothing new, we will adjourn.